Everyone, please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Thank you for your republic, for its independence, one nation, united in all with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to our combined work session in regular meeting for August 3rd. First up tonight is a discussion of New York's stretch energy code. We have a very special guest, building inspector. He's going to kind of give us an overview of what the code is, why we might want to adopt it.
Remember, I'm going to be testing.
Yeah, I didn't know I was going to.
So I made a brief handout. At the lottery told me you were interested. And I dumped a stretch code. And.
Is it this one?
Yes, did I pass that? Okay.
No, it was attached to the agenda.
Okay. So I added a.
Yeah, yeah, not the backboard.
So I added another, um, to it. So the stretch code is a code that you can adopt. If the village chooses to, that brings your energy code requirements a little higher than the state code. It's rumored and it's mentioned in a few of the other codes that it will be part of the New York State Energy Code in 2023, 24. So I did a review of the code. If you want to send a link to the code, it's really not that bad. If you take the front out, which is commercial, we're talking 30 pages from a chemical and 30 pages for residential. So it's not a, it's not a large overpowering document. What's nice about the stretch code versus the lead and all the other codes is it allows for a, um, what they call a. Oh, man, losing my, losing my pencil here. A prescriptive method of compliance where you don't need a consultant for your everyday residential work. Say you're replacing your windows. Well, if you go to page two, the highlighted section, you'll see that the U factor for windows is 32, it's going to go down to 27. Okay, um, that's, um, it is significant in this, in this number considering that we were at, um, where are we at in 2000? The last code, the building code goes in cycles. We have 2015 cycle, that ended like in May last year, we have 2020 cycle. So we went from a 35 to a 32, now down to a 27, if you adopt the stretch code. That'll eliminate the use of Anderson 200 series windows, for example, but the Anderson 400 series windows will now comply. So as a comparison, they're still readily available, no custom windows will have to be made. There are manufacturers that make replacement windows to the U 20, uh, 2027. So it's not like it's the end of the, uh, the rope for window. And I think windows, we concentrate on that the most because that's what most people are doing, is replacing their windows for energy efficiency and just because the windows and the pounds here are kind of over.
Ed, I don't know which part.
Oh, I'm sorry, right here, so here.
Oh, okay.
Here, right here. And I'm looking at the U 27 here.
U 27.
And the U 32 above it. So I highlighted, I, so basically, I added the yellow section to show you, and we'll have to do it if you adopt it, it'll have to be part of the public record, uh, public, uh, material that the architects and the engineers receive to file for a permit. So those, that is like, I think, the most significant change you're talking about. But the prescriptive ma- method versus a lead or something like that will give you the opportunity to not have to do a full calculation on a house. I need siding, I need, you know, the walls. They didn't change very much, so they went from an R20 to an R21. Well, they can't really buy R20 insulation, it really comes R21 already. So that's easy. The biggest significant change in insulation is if you have a extended bay window, I used to have to have R19 and now I've got 703. Also relatively available product, so it's not like it's different other than it has to be a deeper slot. That's the significant change in the housing, um, the residential housing. Are you going to the con- the commercial because it was too complicated for the limited implications it has in this town, this village? So I don't think there's a need to go through that. In designing a new home, you're going to, they're going to have to come up with a, a way of rating the house to 50 uh, in the value of, uh, energy efficiency. That's going to require setting the house properly or making sure that 40% of the roof can receive solar panels in order to meet that requirement. It doesn't say you have to put them in, but the house has to be built to receive it. The house has to be built to be received, a car charger as well. And we can go down the list of the few things it might need. A res check is a very common document that all additions file. It's optional right now, it won't be optional. The insulation values we discussed, everything is still commercially available and the climatic chart that I have fashioned on page two gives you the differences. Some insulation systems will no longer be available. So the blown-in cellulose in walls, unless it's almost seven inches thick, which it won't be, won't work. But there's other back products, um, standard Home Depot products that you can buy and put in there. So it's nothing special about them to me. The hot water pipes, length and, and sizes. In the old days, contractors would put three-quarter inch pipe in and half inch pipe and it would work. Now they want you to run the pipes in a size that keeps the water tempered longer and they want it insulated. So that's a, although a large difference. And this is that, these items here are for new construction and not for existing homes. So if you're renovating your education, you don't have to follow this. In a new home, um, air, air, energy recovery system, air exchange is very important. So you have to have, uh, three air changes per minute mechanically introduced to the house when you have a very well sealed house. Again, for new stuff. The blower door test is now required, the ERV and the HRV is also required. Air testing on ductwork outside the building level is now required, it will now be required inside. The 90% of the luminaire fixtures, um, is in the code now, so there's no change there. We discussed the building must be solar ready and must be electrical vehicle ready. And a new home must have, like you said, the atmospheric energy rating of 50, um, in accordance with the prescriptive design criteria. And these are certified by third-party agency. So I don't see a whole lot of, except for being a more energy efficient home, the stretch code becoming a burden on the applicants other than the usual struggles we have when you have a code cycle change. So we're into the code cycle change for a little over a year now. And we're still having architects and engineers not keeping up with the code. We had a problem just the other day. People misunderstand, the architect was miscalculation, he left the 2015 code on the appliance. And so he was much too, the U value was much too over the top. The last page is interesting, I've just started developing this and I'm working with a few communities with it. To make, the mechanical permits have always been complicated and they always need something different for each one. And you can see there's many different ways of heating and finishing your house. So what I've done here is I've communicated with the two of the communities on the urban towns that have the stretch code in place already. They don't have page two. I shared mine with them and they can be modified and they're synatched page two. Our page two is ready. They, they don't have a mechanical permanent application checklist, which is probably going to be the most problematic for approvals. Our goal here is to provide them with all the questions that they need and which applications or what they need to the submission, to hopefully not slow down the process of issuing mechanical permits. We struggled a little this year with the air conditioning permits. We got through them. We did have up to a two week delay on the air conditioning permits. We have a longer delay on building permits, but air conditioning permits, mechanical permits, plumbing permits, and electrical permits are no longer, they're no more than two weeks behind on. The other permits we were quite worried about because of the load and the stabbing of the ton, we're back into speed now. And that's kind of, um, the gist of the stretch code. I don't, like I said, I'm encouraged by the board taking the, taking the jump into thinking about, about this. I think it's wonderful, it's part of the affordable modern, modern in some proposal because usually those projects are built down and it's not like, they're built fast and cheap. So bringing this, bringing it one leg up to being a energy efficient home for those, those clients would be, I think, a nice gesture.
Who were the two other communities that have this?
Well, Dobbs Frey, uh, Hastings has had it for over a year. Dobbs Frey's had it since, I think, December.
And anybody on the other side of the county?
There are, everyone's looking at it right now. I know, I spoke with Cortland there, the process, they've had a public hearing on it already. And I don't remember, they said something about maybe taking a break from the review because they weren't up to speed with these little documents that, it sounds a little to you guys, but this is, um, they're good tools to communicate to the boards, they're good tools to communicate to the public. And I don't, I don't think we should just, we should just adopt it. Well, I think having these tools before you adopt it were important. So even if you don't adopt it, I'm, you know, I'm going to share these documents with the other communities.
So Ed, what you've said to me is that multifamily is not included right now in, in these regulations?
No, they're included. I didn't, I didn't, I didn't speak on them because they, they wind up being in. The code is broken into three chapters, residential is one or two family. Talk about, and the commercial includes the multifamily. So everything I mentioned with residential is there. There's just a little bit more involved with siding of the buildings, making sure that they have the solar. I don't see a whole lot more than that. There's, um, savings in numbers of units, there's savings in gathering and grouping them. But it's a much more complicated code to communicate. There, although there's a descriptive method within the commercial and multifamily code, you're going to need a consultant for that.
As you would if it was lead.
Lead, lead is all consultants and all complicated. What stretch code gives you is prescriptive, which gives you a, a method of just looking in the book. What's, what's the U factor of the windows, 27, I got it. What's the insulation value on the walls? It's not, you have to calculate this, this, and this to make sure we come up with that. So you don't need a consultant for your everyday additions and new homes. You do need a consultant to rate the house before we can get this building permit. We're talking the new houses, we're not talking any additions, additions. We'll just follow the prescriptive method and if you look in the existing energy code, we'll be following the same description in the existing energy code as you would the stretch code. Everything that qualifies as the existing energy code will now disqualify for the stretch code. And the restrictions will just be, I'm sorry, the values will just be a little bit more energy efficient.
Ed, this may relate to that, is, um, I was drafting language, you know, just to allocate a law to make us, um, make the stretch code applicable. And I sort of said, um.
Mm-hmm, I read it.
But I'm a little confused by it because it says that it shall be applicable to all new construction, substantial renovations, and alterations and additions. Now, if I heard you correctly, you're saying it wouldn't be all alteration, you said if you change in the kitchen, you don't, so I don't.
Yeah, so the kitchen cabinets would not qualify. But if you change the window over the, over the sink, that would need to be, that would need to be, uh, stretch code compliant.
Well, is there something in either the energy code or the stretch code that defines which alterations and additions must comply?
So they follow. They, uh, appendix J in the building code. Appendix J has classifications of type one, type two, and type three construction. Type one doesn't mean any energy code components because type one doesn't affect the fenstration. Type two is additions in interior, oh, actually, type two is just space. The type two says that you have to meet the energy code if you alter more than 50% of any required component. So you're not, if you're renovating the whole first floor of the house and you're not seeing anything under the windows, you can use the same installation in the outside walls. You can match the same installation on the outside walls and you can put the shoebox back on. If you're moving the wall, that wall needs to meet the energy code. And if you feel you can't meet it, but you have other values, you can do a res check.
Okay.
And get those values all, it's not a script that you have to use the, um, U 27 windows. If you don't want to use the U 27 windows, then you have to start doing some after your licensed professional, it's called a res check. We had one gentleman, um, on Urban View Road that was having a little problem. He couldn't make it work. We were curious, so we went ahead, did the res check for him just to see how it worked. And he was able to, with putting a, what's called fan fold installation behind his siding before he installed it. He was able to put in a sit, a 200 series Anderson window in the kitchen. He was redoing the siding anyway, so it worked. And that's through res check. So there's always the.
So it's, the energy, the, essentially, the energy code prescribes which alterations and additions have to be.
No, the building code prescribes an appendix J, we're just talking residential now. The residential code, an appendix J describes the, uh, the applications of a specific size project, type one, type two, or type three alteration. And then it references the energy code. And the type one and type two say if the alteration doesn't do more than 50% of the fenstration, is, is the word they use, then you do not, um, have to meet the new energy code, therefore you don't have to meet the new stretch code.
Okay, all right. I'll, I'll, I'll run the language of this back.
Okay.
With you because I, I think this is a sample of, I believe a misplaced comma is what.
The state never makes a mistake.
So I'll, I'll run it past you. I think I, now I think I understand what you're saying and I, I think they have an extra comma which confused it.
Okay. You said it is a 27, that becomes state code?
24, 21. Year, year, 23. Like the year.
Oh, the year. So in research today, we found that the certain stuff has an expiration of, of 23, 2023 to, uh, the, um, insulation values, sears of the air conditioners, all become state code in 23. There's no word, I mean, we usually see a five-year cycle, so the energy code was at 19, so it's close to 2000, you know, to that.
It's the best gas, yeah.
Yeah, so if it's not, if it's not 2023, it will be 2024 and we'll have a code cycle change in 2005, 2025, the state code, the overall state code.
Does that mean it goes into effect anyway?
Basically, you know, that's, that's.
That's a speculation.
And, you know, this is New York State, so we ride the wave.
Right.
So if we adopt it and if we adopt it now, it goes into effect sooner here than in all the other communities that don't adopt it.
Right. There, there, there were a lot of companies, a lot of communities looking at this. I was just doing a little research, I actually, if you want to find Google, New York stretch code, you see all the communities that are trying to. I was looking for a specific checklist to augment what we've already developed. And there's, there's a couple of them now that are doing it. There's a couple that sound sure that are doing it. So I, I think by the end of next year, you'll see a lot of communities adopting this.
Well, and their, New York State's obviously pushing it, as you remember, back in January, they were very adamant about coming out and doing a presentation. Well, it happened to be on Zoom, but.
Yeah, and it was very informative, it was what they were saying.
It was a little complicated.
It's complicated, it's a little hard in the construction.
And that's why I did, that's why I did the presentation on the prescription. It's very easy to understand. We're already doing X and now we're doing Y. It's not, um, and that's how 95% of our applications will proceed.
So you just.
Which is no different than what they're doing now, it's just a different number of material they're looking for.
In general, would you say contractors will be, uh, pleased to have this because it's straightforward and there, there isn't a lot of try to figure out what to do? Or will they feel a terrible burden by having this?
The contractors feel terrible, terrible burden every time they have to communicate with me.
But say it's easier.
Nobody wants to do with, deal with bureaucracy, everyone wants to do what they want.
Well, I know, but that's not the case now, is it?
We have, we're blessed with a better realm of contractor generally in town who are all excited about doing a good job and doing an energy efficient home. We have some out of town contractors that come in at the Whitebarket, but it's not, you know, I don't. Whatever you guys want is what we're going to do. The choice is yours, it's just very encouraging to see that we're taking that next step.
So really one practical example, like how many, um, if you had to just, you know, to really ballpark it, especially if it's a new construction, say, come windows, how many are like, would be state rated 32 and how many would be closer to be 27 now?
So every window that you take out will have to be 27.
Yeah.
Every place.
Yeah, but how about now without the stretch code? Is it, do you think like most people do that anyway, to be more efficient?
So.
Is it next? People trying to buy this window possible?
Yeah. The Anderson 200s are 29. And that's the lowest grade interest you have.
Yeah.
So they're, they're beat it anyway.
Yeah. Right.
They're beat it anyway.
So it's not like, it's not, you know, it's not a $100 window becomes a $900 window?
No, but the problems we get is with the big colatious windows. Because then it gets all expensive because then you have to, because the substance is glass, you have to do an argon gas or something inside it. You just can't do an E glass, so. That's when it.
Right, so the, the standard window size is not a big issue.
I don't, I don't see the standard windows being the biggest choice, I see the, the larger, more custom homes being the biggest.
So, so Ed, without minimizing the advantage of the prescriptive aspect of the stretch code for single-family homes, but returning to our original thought process about our multifamily zoning and at some point we were thinking about whether within that zoning, we would specify something and we determined that we would not do that and that we would wait and see how the stretch coding goes. What we were thinking about was a lead silver or a lead gold. And I don't know.
Yeah.
How easy it is to you to compare the amount of savings that would, would happen. You know, again, minus the bureaucratic stuff and the, the prescriptive end. I'm not sure if that's a.
Right. It's a, it's a, it's a very hard question to answer, but all. The stretch code gives opportunities for, to save money on consultants right up front. You don't need a consultant, a lead project, you have to have someone design your heating system, your, your insulation system, your, your whole house. You have a very large bill, uh, right up front with the architects to use before you can start the project. The goodness for us, we don't have to redo it, you know, they're certified, they're certified by a hersraider. That, where the stretch code gives you the opportunities to, um, apply the, um, prescriptive method, which makes, you all can figure it out, I can figure it out, we can just make a decision right there and then when we're, we're designing the house. You don't have to have the new business model of hiring a hersraider to help you design your house. It's just another layer of cost for design that a lot of people aren't accustomed to paying. The savings from a lead to a. I, I struggle with that number because you see, and I sort of know it's based on an average house, we don't have any average houses here. So it's difficult.
Thanks.
I have another important question. What does, where does the term stretch come from?
Albany.
No, it makes no sense to me.
There, I don't know what it means. I don't think there's an acronym for it, I think it was, uh.
No, it doesn't look like it.
Yeah, it's a little word case, so it doesn't have an acronym.
Yeah.
I don't think it's an acronym, I think it's just.
This is not just me, I just think no.
I thought, I kept assuming it wasn't, I would happen. In the middle of the meeting, someone, what are we going to call this, somebody went like this. That's awful, I mean, I think, you know, part of it is, it's going to happen anyway, it can do, what happened, happened sooner rather than later, but, um, you know, it's, uh, except if it's going to be, you know, it takes a lot of work for you to get it in or.
No, no, you mean, no, no, that, that part.
When Mary Ann and I first talked a couple of months ago about it, the other communities, and they're still not prepared for it. We are more prepared now for you guys thinking about it than they are prepared and they haven't really adopted it. So feel comfortable that our office will be able to hand out these documents immediately and communicate to the applicants and to the architects, where the other communities didn't even have page two that I supplied you, let alone the page three, which is all the questions someone's going to call and ask you. So we're comfortable, if you guys adopt it, to being able to manage it in a manner that's pretty much equivalent to what we're doing now.
And I'm all set right, once I sort out the comma.
It's a period with a little line on it.
I mean, is there, this is an odd point, but is there somebody in Albany who you would have referenced? You could call and say, now we have this question about it, we're one of, we're in the vanguard here.
So CEOs, code enforcement officers, the ability to email certain trades within the Department of State, the Department of Building Standards and Codes, to assist us in determinations and questions. Both, there's a special one for architects, I mean, for, uh, engineering, uh, energy, there's a different one for structure and there's a different one for building code. And then there's a whole different section for commercial. So we have, we have that ability to call anytime and have a conversation. We have a regional representative who we can call at any time and she'll tell us which person to call. So we have the backup to do this. The energy code people up there are a little, um, technical. And they said they, they rely on the technical instead of the common sense. So there's a big problem translation to common taught to these hersraiders. Uh, they're all engineers, basically, so it gets, it gets, I'm going to send this out in a couple of weeks, I still have a lot of, like, real things I want to fix.
Hate to have, you know, being in the vanguard of this with all the community.
No, and I think the tools we were providing that nobody else has at this time will more than supplement the shock of a new code. And that's almost the shock of what the code says, it's more of shock of a new code, not what's in it. Understanding is not self-explanatory.
So, so we have a timetable on what we plan to do about this and wait for a draft?
I, I can have a draft.
No, but you've announced, you've, you've called for the public hearing.
Yeah.
So you do have a draft, it was an initial, it could still be changed a little bit, but the public hearing's on August 30th.
Okay.
So I guess, I mean, to me, that's basically to get public comment. You know, hey, yes, without a draft, but.
Yep.
Just to hear what the, you know, uh, the concerns are mostly.
Well, and, and the draft, the law itself, in fairness, is an implementing law that implements all of what you just heard. Anything about how to implement it, it just simply does it.
It just says it applies, yeah.
Yeah, so tonight, the purpose of tonight was to understand the inner workings of it. Not, not too deep, but the inner workings of it.
Yeah, and, you know, I'd love to have, you know, maybe we can reach out to a few contractors to see, you know, if they, they've tackled it already in the local community or, or if it's, you know, that way we can try to anticipate what the concerns would be when this. I mean, other, it's going to happen anyway, so they might as well get ready. But, um, you know, to me, it's, if we can have, you know, any new.
This year or two years from now, we're ready.
Right, so, uh, great, thanks very much.
Thanks. Yeah, thank you.
Uh, next year, I'll be, I have recommendations from the plan for reform and reimagining of your improvement. So we have some other special guests?
Yes. I'm going along with the fact of the fact.
Someone's got to do all the work, right?
It's, yeah, it's where we looked at before. I don't know, but everybody knows this is Paul Rubibro. He's one of our, he's now one of our more senior patrol officers. He also handles a lot of our social media, Instagram and stuff. And he's recently been certified as an instructor for the Able Project, which we'll talk about in a few minutes. So if you want to belong with me, just, uh, to give you a little insight on how we get to that section. So I just briefly wanted to talk about a few updates, uh, some progress we've made in some areas of the police reform report. So the document that you have in front of you has some slightly highlighted areas that I'll just talk about. And at any point, if you have any questions about some of the other areas I'm not touching on, if you want, just let me know and I can answer whatever questions you need. So under the category of qualification, recruitment, and promotion, specifically for developing a plan to improve the local candidate pool, we all know that we just had the. We all know that we just had the civil service exam recently. So prior to that exam, uh, we conducted outreach via our social media outlets, uh, to make the community aware of the police entrance exam. We also posted flyers into businesses, schools and in public areas. We shared a video that was made by the Chiefs Association, which targeted underrepresented groups to encourage them to apply for the exam. And we hosted Q and A sessions here in the courtroom to encourage people coming to talk to us about what it's like to be a police officer and actually even assisted with them signing up for the exam on their laptop out here in the computer. And then with the approval of the board, we offered a free test prep course, which seven local residents took an interview and they were able to get the test prep prior to the exam. So that's what we did before this last exam. That was the one that we were waiting for almost five years for it to come. You know, they only raise out, they only come. Make sure you do as much outreach prior to it as you can. But in the meantime, in between exams, we, you know, we plan to continue our outreach to the community and, you know, educate people about what we do and maintain the positive relationships that we have with them. So that when the time comes for the next exam, you know, we're not starting from zero. We can move forward with that. So moving on to the next section for training and officer wellness. One of the recommendations will include man Project Able. Uh, since we completed the police reform committee, we've applied and we've been accepted to Project Able. And now we have two officers that are trained as instructors for the department. These officers that are trained as instructors will now teach the rest of the department about the Able program. And as we need more instructors, we can send more to school, and as we hire new people, they'll get certified Able as well. So that's why I brought Officer Revivro with me today, just to talk to you about Project Able, as he's one of our leading instructors now for the department.
Hey, everybody. I'm Paul. I have been here in, uh, in Arlington. So yes, I was lucky enough that the chief sent me and another officer, Officer Youth, to, uh, get certified to be an Able instructor. So a little bit about Able, okay, so it's a, it's a really, uh, great program. It's gonna be beneficial to everybody who's out here. So basically what Able is, stands for active high standardship and law enforcement. Okay, so basically, it's got pretty much promoted philosophy and build a culture right here in the police department that we're gonna have certain expectations from our officers that are on scene, on calls, to intervene if we see another officer doing something that's gonna cause harm to the community, harm to themselves, harm to policing in general, uh, the reputation of the village of Arlington. So it was a, it was a four-day course, uh, and Officer Youth are gonna be teaching, teaching these tactic prevention to the rest of the department, uh, sometime, I guess, in the next few months or whatever. And, uh, I just think overall, it's just gonna be very beneficial for the community, for the police department, and just continue the goodwill, the press that we have here in Arlington.
This was originally a game of the world, was it?
Yes.
Post Katrina, it was kind of like a new.
Started out as Catholic and then kind of morphed into Able.
As with the Georgetown law.
With Georgetown law. And like currently, I think there's only about like a hundred and fifty police departments in the United States that are fully trained on Able. So we're kind of close to the leading edge of this.
That's great.
And hopefully by early fall of this year, we'll have the whole department trained on it.
And in my layman's terms, the biggest thing is, um, if you are a five-year officer and I'm, you know, just out of, you know, my probationary period and, and training, and I'm the new guy for the chief's there, and, you know, he's the, the chief and I'm the new guy, and either of you is something that I think is incorrect. It teaches you tools, uh, and, and approaches to say, hey, that's, you shouldn't do that.
Exactly.
Whatever that is, little things to major things.
Yep.
They've got the powers, officers of all, all ranks and all levels, uh, to speak up when something's not right, which I think has been one of the big issues. I think a lot of the harmful things we've seen in the last, you know, year, two years, and, you know, hundreds of years. A lot of it is someone, you know, Seth doesn't necessarily agree with what's happening, but it's the senior man or the senior woman, and I'm not gonna disagree with them because it's, A, it's very hard for me to stand up to someone that I, you know, I, I come outranks by. But it's just the culture of it was difficult as well. And I think that that really gets to the culture of everybody's accountable to everybody, um, and now I'm gonna say something, um, so that way I don't have to feel that I didn't say anything and that sort of thing as well, so.
Yeah, it's gonna promote a lot of good dialogue within, within the department from officer to officer. And again, you know, you just used the word culture, and we want to implement that. To, you know, if you see somebody doing something wrong, maybe somebody had a bad day and they're taking it out on, on somebody unfortunately, pull aside and take over the control of this situation. Let's calm everything down. Let's move forward.
Yeah, yeah, but I think that's another thing that I remember from, you know, seeing the, the presentation on it was, it's not always the confrontation with civilians or something. It's also that, you know, you know that I had a really tough meet with my, my daughter going to school and I was fighting with my wife, and maybe I was just not in the right headspace to be out there, you know, in the public. So you can say, hey, Brian, you know, why don't you, you know, maybe take today off and, and take a, a health, mental health day or something, uh, and that sort of thing as well. So it's not just intervening during like a, a confrontation or something, but it's, it's kind of looking out for other officers and their mental health as well before something bad happens. Or, you know, have a suck in three days, well, you know, maybe you should be out of control today, that kind of thing.
Did the training put, I'm sorry, did the training put you through, um, role-playing situations?
It did.
Did you find that effective?
Uh, it was good. I mean, you know, sometimes role-playing's a little awkward, you know, but it was, it was good. And we're gonna be doing that here. We have a bunch of scenarios that I'm gonna be running the other officers through. And just, you know, just little things, you know, like it's muscle memory, just like how we go to the firing range or how we, you know, we train in other things. This is really important. We gotta be sharp in this type of stuff.
Well, well, I remember being very impressed with the increased edition Able made. Now that we're intimately involved with it here, how do you measure success? How do we know as a, as a village that, that the program is working?
Well, I think, uh, in, in general.
I think you can answer that.
Well, I think, I, I mean, I spoke, I got to meet Jonathan when I was down Orlando. He's, he's the chair of the program. And he makes it a clear point that it's hard to measure something that doesn't happen, you know what I mean? So it's hard to really measure how successful it is based on the fact that we could have prevented something, but you just never know that it was gonna happen to begin with, because it didn't happen. So it's a difficult thing to do, but, um, you know, officer wellness, you know, could be measured as far as, you know, like Brian said, people that need mental health days and things like that, or, you know, hey, why don't you step back from this, you know, you don't have the right headspace, things like that. I've seen, you know, increasing, you know, officer wellness and, you know, things like that. So it's a difficult thing to measure, but it's been effective, I believe, so far.
Well, I know that we're thinking of, you know, more, more surveys both, both of the village and of the IPD as well. Maybe there could be some structure for, for questioning about at least the officer's perception of the program or satisfaction of the program.
Yeah, that's a very good point. Okay, so, I mean, speaking about mental health, that's the next thing that I wanted to touch base on is enhancing the awareness of the personnel about employee assistance programs. So we, we posted some flyers and information and commentaries at the police department, which outlines the resources available to the police department personnel for E and P program. I've also reached out to our insurance carrier to see what programs are available through our insurance coverage. They were able to provide me with some handouts as well as a website link that has all the different types of assistance available under recurrent healthcare, uh, coverage. But I sent that link out to all the department members so they could, they could browse through it and see what they have access to via mental health and substance abuse. They can apply right there. They can call the number and speak with somebody twenty-four seven. Uh, that could get them into any type of program they might need. And it's also for their families as well. It's not just for them. So, you know, at any time they might need help, they have a number to call. They could get into a program for whatever their, their problem might be and get some assistance. And members of our police reform committee is also volunteered to make a few posters and signs that show symptoms of trauma in different avenues that could provide help for officers as well that will hang up in the commenters once that's complete. So then moving on to the last item under training and officer wellness is implicit bias and cultural competency training. Some of the administration was able to take implicit bias training, uh, last year or so, through the village when it was offered, and a few of us also took procedural justice and principal policing. So in collaboration with some other jurisdictions, we're, we're looking to explore having trainers come in to train the whole department on procedural justice and principle policing. That course covers topics that include, you know, implicit bias, police legitimacy, the history of policing and the generational effects you can have, as well as officer wellness. The whole purpose of that course is targeted at improving the public's trust in the department, the confidence in the department. And it focuses on, uh, you know, voice, making sure they know we're neutral, that they can trust us and that, you know, there's a mutual respect, that we're showing respect to the community and, you know, of receiving that. So, uh, that course, we're trying to plan for the fall. We're gonna try to collaborate with some other jurisdictions to reduce the cost for it and have everybody trained, kind of mix the groups together. They've noticed that when police officers are in a room with lieutenants or captains from places, they don't wanna open up and talk about things so freely. So if you have mostly police officers there and then you save a day where you train like defense captains and chiefs and stuff, it's a little bit more beneficial to everybody. They can open up a little bit more. So we're gonna try to do that with some of the other River towns this fall and put that training together. Moving forward to the next section for safety and equipment. Uh, the one up in here would be with the body cameras. We received all the equipment. We have it in, in-house. We are setting up the date for them to come in to physically set it up and also. So they'll train the administration, they'll train the users, they'll train the trainers so that we can train new people. It's a full day of training that they come from South Carolina to set up anew. So we're in the process of scheduling that, and once that happens, we'll be able to roll the program out right after that. So, um, there's like a four to six week lead time on that, but once that happens, we should be able to go up pretty quickly. Moving on to the next section on accountability and evaluation. Two of the sections right there that we wanted to talk about was improving the process for public feedback on officers, uh, anonymously and not anonymously. So for non-anonymous, uh, and that's already getting worked on, we're adjusting the website with updated information and different ways for people to report feedback on the department as well as individual officers. The new, this new process will be placed online, so it's easier for people to provide feedback. Currently, they would have to come in to provide feedback or make a complaint, fill out. What, uh, what I wanna do is make it all available online. You can fill it out online, submit it online. You can mail it in, you can drop it off. You have all these different avenues of how you feel comfortable, you know, dropping it off or, or bringing it in and signing it. So we're working with the, uh, website company right now to make the templates and the forms for that so that we can just do it all online on our website, be able to fill it out and submit it there. And for public feedback anonymously, we're setting that up on the website also so that people do have an avenue to, uh, provide feedback anonymously. We're still working on the fine details about it, but we should be able to make that available around the same time as we make the anonymous feedback available on the website. Uh, it's a little bit difficult, um, and different in the way it gets, you know, investigated just because you don't have the ability to interview a complaint. It's a little bit more difficult to corroborate. So, you know, we do, so we've researched the best practices from various organizations. The International Association for Chief of Police, as well as the National Association for Specifically Oversight of Law Enforcement, just to look for guidance in that area so that we can move forward with accepting anonymous feedback. So that will be on the website as well in a template form. People could just fill out, they'll get shot over. There, nobody will ever know who it came from and be able to accept anonymous feedback, which we've never done before. Moving on to policies and procedures for pursuing lead accreditation. We just recently formally submitted our initial application to New York State for the accreditation process, which is the, the application that you signed for us. Uh, this is only the beginning phase of the long process, as we all know. We've already begun the long and labor-intensive process of updating our policy manual. We're in the beginning phase of that. Taking into consideration, uh, lots of recommendations from the committees, taking into consideration the recommendations from the village's Labor Council. So we're working on that part of it. Once we, once we update the manual, as we update the manual, we're gonna be pushing out those sections to the department through their new Power DMS platform. And that's gonna also be our new mobile app that we're using. So starting on August tenth, every officer is gonna be able to use the mobile app, whether it's on a smartphone or the computer, and pull up the whole manual on there. So they could reference it anytime, on a call, in the car, somebody's house, no matter what. And then as the policy gets updated and pushes it out to them, they're gonna learn that there's a new update. They have to review it and sign off on it, so everybody's always current on the manual. And I wanna jump ahead for a second, but, um, one of the other recommendations was publishing the manual. What this mobile app will allow us to do is put public, uh, forward-facing documents on our website. So as we go through the manual and update it, all the sections of the manual that we can. And they'll just get pushed out to the website through, through this new mobile app. So everybody will be able to review and look at our policies online. Moving along to community engagement, uh, we've increased our use of walking and bicycle patrol tours. Um, we've had another officer trained on bike patrol. We increased our bike patrols during day camp hours right now. And we've increased our walking patrols, especially in the new park that's now, or not the new park, but the park that's now open. So we're down there quite a bit lately, too. We just recently, or, or we're soon gonna be ordering the electric bicycles that the board has approved. We won't have them until next year, because they're not gonna be ready till February, March, they said, presumed in the light. But once we get them, that's gonna also increase our ability to patrol the village on bikes, the e-bikes, up and down, uh, in more areas that we have in, in the past. And within the same category, publicizing and continuing non-enforcement engagement with the youth. We continue to do this and we try to publicize as much as possible on social media. Uh, but we are present at youth events, camps and other venues when it's possible to continue to build a relationship with our youth population. Uh, we have, you know, it's a technical tool on who's, who's present at the day camp, you know, at least a few times a week. Uh, right now, we're present at the other camps that were going, going on before that. So we are still building that relationship with our youth, uh, population. Reviewing the, uh, police department website, which we are currently in the process of, like I said, we're working with the, the website company to help build out those templates for the complaint procedures and some other things. One of the other things we've talked about is making it easier for FOIL requests. Our idea is to make a template for FOIL requests where you could just pull it up online, enter the information that you want, hit submit, it'll get sent to us, and we can process the FOIL that way instead of having to either print it out, fill it out, scan it, or, you know, mail it in. Just trying to make that a little bit easier as well. Then moving on to data transparency and technology. I already spoke about publishing our, our manual via the Power DMS module. Talked about simplifying the FOIL request process by making a template online. Along with the complaint procedure, we're gonna have a tab for compliment procedure. It's just the same thing. It's just gonna be a template where people could, they have a compliment about one of the officers. They can fill it out, send it in. Currently, where we get compliments, usually just an email to me, and then I'll send it to everybody and hang it up in the, in the comment area. But it might make it a little bit easier for people that might not know about it to do that. Uh, we're in the process of formalizing a peaceful protest surveillance policy. It's being worked on. We do have a draft, and we understand the importance of protecting individuals' rights to peacefully protest and assemble. So we're making sure that the policy we're drafting shows that in it. And lastly, utilizing a Spanish-language translation app. Currently, we have a translation line on our nine-one system, which allows us to ask a translator for help when we take nine-one calls. And we also have a translator service in the field that we can call on assist without a call. Other than that, that's, that's our two avenues to, to use a Spanish-language translation. If it's a criminal case, though, we would bring a certified police translator in person to handle that or whatever language that we need, and we could bring somebody in. Currently, right now, we do have three, uh, employees that speak fluent Spanish and can translate for us that if we need to. We have one that speaks Portuguese and an other one that speaks French. So, uh, for Spanish, we have two, two of those individuals work five days a week and they're available to translate. And the other individual works a twelve-hour course, so it's hit or miss when easier. But we do have employees that could do translations if we need to. And then if we don't have those available, we go with, we jump to neighboring jurisdictions for help with that. So that's just a little bit of a rundown about some of the items that we've been working on since the last update that I gave you. Uh, like I said, if you guys have any questions about any other topics later, I'd be happy to answer for you.
Just, um, two quick questions. Um, is there anything so far that you've gone through that you, that you think is probably not gonna be possible to accomplish this time, or?
I don't think there's anything that's not gonna be entirely possible. I think some things, you know, are a little bit more difficult and might need a little bit more research to do, you know, in an effective way. But, or, and then some things are gonna take time, you know, like the, like the. But, or, and then some things are going to take time, you know, like the, like the accreditation itself or eventually exploring Kalia accreditation. It's a very difficult, long process, but, you know, I don't feel like anything is impossible or, you know, we could eventually get there. So.
And for the kind of outside ones where it's more lobbying for lack of a better term, um, you know, uh, I'd be happy to brainstorm between Larry and I how we want to do that because I think those are relatively easy to get not going for you. Um, and I'd be happy to, obviously I think the board would be happy to sign the letters or I know I would anyway to, you know, the governor or, uh, somebody's around, uh, or, um, you know, or our legislature, the test sort of thing. So, uh, we can bring someone out. So I think those are, you know, that's, that's four of them we can talk about in the next couple of months. So it's important to keep that on your list anyway.
Yeah, absolutely. I think it's important to do, you know, certain later because before you know it, kind of getting it gets pushed back to the back burner and then the test is approaching and it's.
Exactly. I have to talk about it. I think, you know, I have to, I have to probably copy George Lattimer on all of them as well since the county, um, you know, it's kind of the one holding the bag on a lot of these things. Even they don't have the authority over what, how often they're given. They had to administer the test, for example. Right. So, um, you know, and I think it's, I think it's a good time to bring up the issues, you know, because I think the, you know, it's still, it's not in front of mind for everyone, uh, maybe not for the governor right now, but for everybody else, it's still in front of mind. But, um, you know, I think it's, uh, I think we should, we should push that up in priority because it's, it's relatively easy and we've not got some of the other ones, by the way. Great. Any other questions?
No, just thank you for how seriously you've taken this whole process and how thoroughly you've addressed all of these recommendations. The church, you know, works in progress and the amount of difficulty and how you were approaching the different recommendations is extremely helpful.
Thanks, Paul.
Yeah, yes. Good night.
Thank you, Paul. Appreciate it.
Next up is a review of preliminary application by sixty-seven North Broadway, Villa Luaro for a special permit for adaptive regardless of snorkels.
My name is Kate Wright, attorney with the law firm of Keenan Dean. Um, I'm here representing the owner of Villa Luaro LLC. We do need a couple of folks joining us via Zoom if that's possible.
If they've gotten in, we'll see.
I do think that Keenan Dean is one of my favorite law firm names ever.
Mr. Bean and Mr. Keen down each other's throats about forty-one years ago. Amazing.
So it looks like there's only one.
Okay. Um, so while that's, I'll also introduce the rest of the folks that are with me here tonight. Um, we have quite a cast here, which I hope shows the dedication to, uh, to Villa Luaro. We have Steve Tilly, uh, architect, uh, and also from his office, we have Elizabeth Martin and Stephanie Reiner. We also have from my office, Jordi Delas Andrade, associate at my office, Erica Seaborn via Zoom. Uh, she's with the law firm of Paul Peely. She's the manager of Phil, uh, Phil and Ralphie there. I'm having a little trouble hearing you. I know the mask is not, I'm trying to. I'll try to speak up. I tend to have a little bit of a quiet voice to be honest. So I'll try to project a little more. Um, and hopefully joining us as well will be, uh, Mr. Rich Dennis, the owner of the property, uh, still member of Villa Luaro LLC. Um, also here with us who stepped out to call Mr. Dennis is William James, who does work with, uh, with Mr. Dennis, the owner. So we are here tonight with respect to the historic property Villa Luaro, uh, just, uh, just up the street. Um, I know many of you are familiar with the history of Villa Luaro, uh, the former home of Madame C.J. Walker, uh, who was the first self-made female millionaire in the United States. Um, she was also a woman of color. Uh, she owned a hair care business called Madame C.J. Walker Manufacturing Company. And Villa Luaro at sixty-seven North Broadway was her former home. Um, she commissioned architect Bernard Tandy, uh, who was the first licensed black architect in the state of New York to design and build that structure. She moved there into the home in nineteen eighteen. Um, and it was listed on the National Register of Historic Places in nineteen seventy-six. So it has, it has quite a history. Um, what the owner would like to do is apply for a special permit under your code, section two twenty-three dash eight C to allow for the adaptive reuse of that historic building. Under your, your code, it allows for a special permit granted by the board of trustees to allow for that use. Uh, so you have some familiarity with the section. You have the octagon house before you, uh, recently, uh, which obtained that same special permit. So in order to receive the special permit, the structure does have to be listed on the National Register of Historic Places or locally landmarked. And it has to be used for historical, educational or cultural purposes, including things like tours, uh, meeting rooms and classrooms, exhibition and archival spaces, uh, have a gift shop under the code and then accessory spaces like offices and kitchen facilities. So what the owner would like to do is, um, use that, the, the, the property, um, for the institute that he's created, which is the Madame C.J. Walker, so it's a handful. The Madame C.J. Walker Institute for Women of Color Entrepreneurs. I'll refer to it as the institute. Um, it's a non-for-profit. It's a five oh one C three, not-for-profit company. Um, and it is dedicated to educating, empowering and uplifting women of color entrepreneurs. Um, and the intention is to do this, uh, to implement the mission while celebrating historical significance of the property and the architectural importance of the property as well. So specifically, uh, what the use would entail is, um, first with respect to educational uses. Uh, we would like to use the space for seminars and workshops for those participating in the programming of his New Voices Foundation. The New Voices Foundation is, its mission is to help women of color business owners to, to build, grow and scale their businesses. Uh, the foundation helps to provide access to capital and expertise through, through mentorships and other programming. Um, in twenty twenty, last year, the foundation provided about sixty grants, uh, to women of color business factors through pitch competitions. Pitch competitions are, you think about Shark Tank, the TV show Shark Tank, similar to that, where you pitch your, your business idea and you are awarded capital to, to, to get it off the ground. The second type of use is for special event space. From time to time, uh, we anticipate the institute will be approached, um, by organizations to hold special events uh, because of the historic and architectural importance of the building. Um, and those events would be related to the charitable purpose of the, of the five oh one C three. We anticipate that would be about one to five events per year, um, and could include up to four hundred people. We do anticipate that they could be, uh, you know, very well attended. Uh, the third type of use would be for private tours. Uh, we anticipate that the tours would be no more than fifty people. Uh, and we would note that under an easement that, that is on the property through the, um, National Trust for Historic Preservation, we are required to have the property open to the public at least two times per year. Uh, so we would be, you know, obviously whatever use is, uh, is implemented at the property, we would be complying with all of the terms of that easement. Uh, and then there would be private office, accessory office space for the institute and any, uh, contractors, private contractors that are involved in the programming, uh, for the, the New Voices Foundation and the institute. So, um, we understand that there is limited space onsite for parking. So we, yes, we made sure to, to focus on that as we're preparing the application to, to, for submitting to your board. So what we've come up with is a sort of three-tiered approach to parking. Uh, there are onsite spaces available, uh, and Steve, we do, we submitted, um, two parking plans with our materials. Steve had us them up on boards in case it's easier for you to see. But we did mark out that there are twelve onsite spaces that would be available for self-parking. Uh, so you'll see around the, here's the building, Broadway, um, on the right side of the page, the sort of horseshoe, uh, driveway. So parking along the interior of that horseshoe. Two spaces here, which is the loop next to the building. And then four spaces down here, um, at the, the ancillary building. Um, it would still provide for fire access and emergency access at, to, to loop around that horseshoe, uh, in the event that's necessary. So the second tier would be a, a valet situation where there would be tandem parking. Um, and this plan was also submitted to, we marked out up to twenty-one spaces. Could be available at the site under that scenario. So you see, we took advantage of the loop here to use tandem parking through a valet-style, um, event.
And you still have the, the continuous emergency egress. So the, the, especially an emergency vehicle that can't back up. It needs to go through from gate to gate. So.
Excuse me. That's the aqueduct, uh, the.
This is the aqueduct. Yeah, that's the, the wall. Uh, that's the carriage house.
Right.
And this is the fountain and this is Broadway. All right. So there's a gate at the north end and a gate at the south end. And those would be open during this kind of event.
And then the third tier would be the off-site, um, shuttle, uh, type parking. Uh, we have reached out to, I should say, not we, but, but Mr. James has reached out to the Immaculate Conception Church just down the road. Um, it's located about a quarter mile south of the property. Um, and they are amenable to, um, we say, to, to coming to terms with, you know, allowing a certain number of spaces to be utilized by Villa Luaro for special events that would require that number of parking and attendance. Uh, and then we would use, you know, shuttle buses to bring people back and forth, uh, between the church and the property. We do understand that for the larger events, uh, the key is really going to be open communication with the village as far as, uh, the timing of the event, the, the necessary preparations for the event, uh, to make sure that we're avoiding any particular pedestrian, uh, conflicts uh, during, before, during and after the event. Uh, in that vein, we anticipate the need to hire, you know, off-duty, um, police officers to help with directing traffic, um, on an as-needed basis. And obviously we would want to appropriately stage the event, um, prior to it to make sure that we're not causing any disruptions. Uh, you're probably aware of the, the recent event that occurred there a couple of years, not two years, a couple of weeks ago, um, which was a filming event, um, for a fashion show and it was very well attended. Um, originally on Thursday, uh, rainstorm kind of washed that out and then it got rescheduled to, to that Saturday. Um, the collection that was shown at that fashion show, by the way, is, um, is scheduled to be, um, at Villa Luaro as an exhibit in the fall. Uh, so that will be interesting. Um, and we are aware that there were a couple of hiccups related to particular and pedestrian conflicts, um, in traffic. So we're aware of those issues and we anticipate that we'll be able to avoid those issues, um, through this special permit process uh, by putting together the appropriate protocols and, um, and guidelines to make sure that those hiccups, um, don't occur again. So we don't, as I said, we don't anticipate that, uh, the site would host more than a couple of those events per year, but it is possible. So we are in the process of putting together a formal application for submission to the board for your review. We wanted to come here tonight in a work session setting, um, to, uh, give you a preview, um, and solicit any feedback that you might have that we could incorporate into our application as we're sort of sharpening our pencils. Um, and I just want to mention again that, um, Mr. Dennis, the, um, the owner of the property is, uh, participating via Zoom. I just want to mention that in case he wants to add anything regarding the, the use of the property. Mr. Dennis, if you could hear me. Feel free to unmute yourself and, and chime in if you're able.
Not hearing himself or we're muting him?
No, he's.
His mic is off? Is that us or?
Yeah, no, he's controlling that. So, yeah, we.
So not hearing anything on that end.
If he finds his mic and he wants to come on, he certainly can.
Thank you so much. So if you've got any questions, I will.
Yeah, the question I have, you, the, the last event you did wonderful and very successful. And, um, and it, the screen timed approach is, is a very creative solution to that. My question would be, suppose you get more response than you anticipate. So scenario one is up to twelve vehicles. The next one is up to however many vehicles, but suppose more than that comes?
I think that what we would have to do is to make sure that in the planning of the event, it is very clear that, um, you know, that, that we're having it as a certain number of participants. Um, uh, or making sure that we have as a backup that shuttle service, um, set up. Even if, you know, if we, if we anticipate that we're going to be close to the twenty, what was it, twenty-one space limitation for valet, that we have the shuttle service lined up. I think a lot of us anticipate is what more than that, yeah.
So, William, did you have something?
No, just they're, they're having a difficult time hearing.
Oh, okay.
One of the other.
Okay.
They're having trouble hearing us?
Correct.
Oh.
This is the first time. First time we've been asked and, so. I don't know if that's it or if it's, uh, something more technical, but, um, you know, I think of the uses, I think most of, uh, I think there's four. I think three of them, I don't really give me any concern at all. Um, even the opening up to, as a museum for fifty people. I think we've seen it with, uh, the octagon house. I think they have twenty-five.
They have a camp of twenty.
Twenty. But it is a different setup. Uh, so, you know, fifty, you know, does, you know, make me somewhat nervous. But I think, you know, reaching out to the Immaculate Conception is definitely a good idea. The other good thing is if there's two other churches that are actually on the same side. Um, I think if it's not Sunday, those parking lots are typically empty and then people are going across the street. So between the churches, there's a, there's a fair amount of parking. Uh, the special event space obviously, uh, is, is the one that, you know, we obviously have to, to really hammer through. Um, the PR boss, uh, you know, event was unbelievable. It provided energy to a region like we might have never had here before. Uh, not that our high school sports aren't great, but, um, you know, it, it definitely was a unique event. Um, I think as for every five people, it told me it was one of the coolest things ever. We had one person who said, you're an absolute moron for letting it happen, that meaning me. Um, and, you know, I think a lot of it, but, but the difference between Thursday and Saturday and the chief's here too. I think it was much smoother by Saturday than it was on Thursday. And I think the right communication was a big key. Um, I don't think we anticipated the amount of people. Uh, I think we were planning for two hundred originally and then it was kind of all might be closer to five. I think it was like seven fifty. So it was, you know, a much bigger event, um, you know, and, uh, you know, I think we, we did have a bunch of hiccups for lack of a better term. I like that euphemism. It must touch that at Keenan Bean. But, uh, you know, I think with proper planning, we can ensure that there is, um, you know, the same energy and excitement and, uh, you know, cultural experiences and, you know, something super positive for the village and for Villa Luaro and for the participants, obviously. Um, but not impacting, you know, making sure there's no parking on, um, you know, a faraway lane. Uh, hopefully soon to be Madame C.J. Walker way here. But, um, you know, so I think that there's, there's definitely concerns there. And I know we're going to hear from some of the neighbors, um, but I think they're all manageable. And I think if we work with, you know, with Larry Schoffler, the village administrator and with the police chief and the lieutenants who kind of point things. I think you're right, town chief.
Yeah, correct.
Well, you're all done.
Yeah.
Um, but, you know, I think that we learned a lot. Um, it's a unique setup. It's not great for traffic at all. Um, you know, so I think that the church parking laws would probably be a key to a lot of those events. Um, you know, and, you know, frankly, if there's, you know, shuttle buses on the city or something, uh, figuring out a way to get those buses, uh, you know, maybe even on property. And Steve, you're probably much better. I don't know if buses can really even drop people off without, you know, kind of stopping on, I mean, maybe it's a few smaller.
For the buses that were there that.
Exactly. So it's, you know, I think, I think with some planning, we can figure out a way that Broadway is much less impacted. Uh, hopefully we still won't have content there for, uh, you know, for the next hundred years. Like it seems they might be here. But that also added to it, obviously the torrential rains. Um, but, you know, I think that we'll have to, you know, dig down deeply on the special event, uh, planning. And, you know, I'm not sure how we, you know, kind of memorialize that.
Right.
Yeah, sure.
Just on your point, on the, um, special permit for octagon house, one of the conditions of the special permit is, um, any special event has to be approved by the board of trustees. So I, so you may want to have a condition like that.
This makes sense. It's only going to be.
They're only talking about a few here. It's not a separate special permit, but it has to be run by the board. And I, I think that would be a good condition.
I think that makes a lot of sense.
That would probably, because it's hard to, it's impossible to come up with all of the conditions, you know, ahead of time, because I have a problem with it.
And each event's different.
But it needs advance, you have to approve it, and they'll know far enough in advance about these events, so they'll have to do it.
And then the...
It would be on the agenda, and then the neighbors could come and say...
Right. And the model we used for this particular event, I know we're dwelling on just one event, but that's all we have. The model we used was a filming permit that the board issued for that. Now, in hindsight, the board didn't have exactly the full information, as the mayor referenced, in terms of the number of people attending and all that, but, you know, presumably in the future, we'll have the proper information, and they'll be able to deal with it on a similar model, they'll be able to deal with it at this level.
And I would think that the responsibility would be on the Institute to come to the Board early enough so that if the Board says, "Oh, wait a minute, five hundred's too many", you know, you only have three hundred, whatever, you know, you just have to recognize that the Board will probably have some things to say, and you have to give them enough time.
Right, yeah, absolutely, that's something that we can explore through this process, absolutely, I just see that condition.
And one other thing while I'm looking, because I pulled out our correspondence on the Octagon House one, just to walk with the thinking, and actually, I recommend to you, you might want to look, if you go back to your emails, April 1st, 2019, that's when we sent the final special permit, and it would be on your email, and it's probably what we're looking at to give you an idea. But one other thing, it reminded me, one other, it may not be an issue for you guys, this is something that maybe Steve Tilly will have to deal with with that about, is there are some uses that have to meet the building code. Like, I think you're having people stay there, right? And I remember one of the issues for Octagon House was both people living there and having tours. There's just some technicalities in the building code that you're going to have to work out. So, I would suggest that you probably thought to add sooner rather than later to get those things working out, because that wasn't a big issue, we got around to it, it wasn't an issue.
No, I've talked to Michael, and we, you know, the creative solution he had, Octagon may not be necessary, but we will have a, there will be a, there has been the beginning of, and there will be a continuation of the dialogue with the building department about uses and, you know, about the...
And needing to find...
That aspect of the building code, and then the requirements of the occupancies, because it is a change of use of the building from residential to a, you know, an occupancy category that's a museum. So, you know, that will, it started and it will continue.
I had, you know, this is very thrilling to me, but I do understand all the practical things that came out of the first film experience there, and I would have sympathy for the neighbors who had difficulty with that, but I think this kind of discussion is very, very critical, and Mary had suggestion about making sure that an event is known by the public here way ahead of time, and that the, all those things can be worked out, there's better communication, I certainly believe that. But I'm really interested in the educational side of your proposal, and you mentioned that having some emphasis on the history of Madam Walker herself, her business, her extraordinary accomplishments, her philanthropy, all the accomplishments that she had, and that side of Jim Crow that were extraordinary. And I'm just wondering, when you described the pitch competition, the New Voices Foundation, I wasn't hearing, maybe if you could elaborate on the kinds of ways in which you would be emphasizing that history of her, would there be chances where some people in the county could come and hear information and seminars and discussions? It wouldn't be about perhaps someone who wished to be an entrepreneur, but they really wanted to understand the history of this particular extraordinary woman?
Sure. So, my understanding of the Institute's mission is that its mission is very much tied into sort of the legacy of Madam C.J. Walker as a, you know, woman of color entrepreneur. So, the mission of the Institute is to promote these women of color entrepreneurs and help to capitalize their businesses, help them through, you know, education, through mentorships, through ways to sort of bolster their businesses. So, that is the educational part of the use of the Institute and the use of the site, but we did also mention the private tours, and what I believe is that the private tours would, that would be the educational aspect of, you know, teaching about Madam C.J. Walker's life, about, you know, her history and her contributions, as well as the architectural importance of the building as well, being designed and built by the first licensed black architect in New York State. So, I think it's the private tour is the aspect of the...
All right, well, that's helpful. But if I just put in a plug, that there'd be, when you set up, when you say tour, it's sometimes kind of history-like, I'm thinking of the people who are really interested in going deeper into a seminar kind of experience that would be part of the tour if that could qualify. I mean, I can't tell you guys what to do, I can just say that I think there would be a great deal of understanding about such a positive experience and all the ways in which we overcame the great handicaps that were thrown at or by the society at the time. So, that was one thing. The other thing, I know you're aware of, I would just jump again for applying for a local landmark, I know you don't need it, in the sense that you're already so well-recognized, but it's very important to the local historical society to be able to increase, I mean, the Lombardi's did that, and they helped actually make the application for future historic places, and this would be one of them. So, I think that would be just my personal plug, that would make it helpful and nice, but I've been very excited and very happy to read about this, and your, and our experiences so far with Mr. James. Been wondering. And here he comes.
So, I think William may have Rich Dennis here on the phone, since the sound on Zoom wasn't working too well.
Oh.
Mr. Dennis, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you now.
Okay. Can you hear us now? So, you, you're here in the Village Board of Trustees meeting in the work session, you've got the members of the Board of Trustees here. Is there anything that you want to add regarding your intended use of the property?
Yeah, first of all, thank you guys for inviting me and for having me, and I tell you, it's been, it's been a wonderful experience thus far, and appreciate all the efforts that everybody has made thus far. You know, it was incredible that I spent a bunch of time up there a few weeks ago, but it's just incredible to see and feel and experience the energy. The vision that we've had, as you guys have heard before, is really this notion and this idea of creating a primarily virtual experience around entrepreneurship, as, and then being able to use what Madam C.J. Walker has started, built as a, as a place where people could actively experience it, and so, you know, the idea of being able to take her vision and her mission global, but yet keep it small and tight and local, is one that I think is very valuable and exciting, not just for the larger community, but also for the community as a whole. And so, we are, you know, we've been committed, we are, I just committed very enthusiastically about where, about where this now leads and the opportunities that this brings, not just for entrepreneurs all over the place, but also for the town. And we're, we're looking forward to partnering to do even more, and we're hoping that I can do even more. You know, we're not looking to come in and, you know, take over the town or be disruptive in any way, but we are looking to bring some real energy, and some real, actually, really make Irvington the home of entrepreneurship for women, even if it's not, you know, have a whole bunch of people there, but it is, it is setting, setting the stage and the, and the, and the experience around, around what great entrepreneurship looks like, as we all strive for a more equal, more equal, more equal world, and so, we're grateful and excited, and thank you guys for having us and for having me.
Great. Thank you. Yeah, I think that I don't see any of the uses as insurmountable, you know, I think, and the special event is probably the one that we have to think most carefully through, and it's probably the one that's kind of most on the periphery of the main focus also, but at the same time, it has the opportunity, like the fashion show, to bring a certain energy and excitement and unique experience to Irvington that, you know, would be, you know, a great thing, you know, it's, so I think we're, I think, you know, the whole board is excited for this, you know, and I'm very confident that, you know, with our police department and our administration, that we can work through any of the special event issues, you know, we obviously learned from the previous two, even though it was only one event, you know, and we got better each time, and, you know, other than the weather, you know, I think we can, you know, I anticipate the next one to be great, so, yeah, we're all excited about it, we can definitely work through it, we're looking forward to hearing from the neighbors and others, and I think, I think, judging by the first event, the vast majority of the feedback was super positive, and then you had a small minority who were either directly impacted or just don't like anything happening that we heard from, so, you know, it is what it is, but, you know, I'm confident that we can work through this, and we're looking forward to the formal, you know, submission, and I guess we'll talk about it in a period, right? That plan, or just...
Yeah, thank you, thank you for that, and we absolutely, we're, we're not just, we just enjoy it, but we're extremely encouraged by it, because I don't know if you guys have got any of the data or any of the data, you know, Irvington and the Villa was seen and made aware of through that fashion show, and that experience by millions and millions and millions of people around the globe, I think it's over a billion impressions, and everybody can talk about Irvington and imagine Madam C.J. Walker, which we did, and so I think, like I said, you know, to make Irvington the epicenter of female entrepreneurship, I think is a pretty, is a pretty cool thing, and I think is one that we have a tremendous opportunity to leverage, and what that means is not just add the bench, but in other, other places in Irvington that we can expand our programming and try that type of, drive that type of engagement and awareness and excitement. I think it's, I think it's, it's pretty cool, so, just looking forward to that more. I think the first step for us is really getting more awareness to be and getting these activities happening there, and then extending out from there into other parts of Irvington.
Well, I would add that, and you probably know, Mr. Dennis, the theater, the Irvington Town Theater is very interested in communicating and collaborating in various ways, there's already programming there, discussions that they would love to have with you. I mean, also, right?
Yeah, I mean, we got a chance, I got a chance to visit the theater maybe two years ago, and now that we're getting, we're getting programming stood up, you know, I think, I think those are, that's exactly what we're talking about, right? It's like, I don't need, I don't need to engage and spread this across, across the, across Irvington, so that's, that's fantastic, yeah.
Good. Well, thank you all again, and we look forward to working with you and figuring this all out.
Thank you, guys.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And by the way, one of the, I was an article in Vogue magazine that mentioned Irvington, I don't know if you saw it, if you did, I could pass it along to you there.
Yeah, I must have seen, you know, I get like Google alerts are a top Irvington...
Sure.
I'm always, I mean, it's not Irvington, New Jersey, but the coolest one, I think, it was the Brisbane in Australia that has their nine photos of the week, and one of them was from the fashion show in Irvington, New York, so.
Yes.
The other were like huge news stories, and I mean, I think that very much actual picture, I think it was the first, the first model that came out.
Right, exactly. I think I saw that one as well.
It was pretty cool, yeah, like picture of the day, Irvington, New York.
I'm looking forward to you coming back, and I think the honorary street remaining like in the next, pretty small compared to this event.
You should, you should expect an update from me on that in the next couple of weeks, we're trying to nail down a date, we want to be mindful of vacations that people have planned in August, so we're possibly looking at the first half of September, so. Yeah, it's all good.
Good.
Thank you so much.
Good. Two shirts.
I think that's...
No K.V. law stuff, I want to be... Next is the review of the draft law, local law regarding smoking. Shift gears.
Yeah.
Do you want me to go back through that?
Yeah, sure, thank you.
We've got it down there. See, it's pretty simple, what I did was, I made it part of the nuisance law, because that nuisance chapter, because that's where most things seem to fit in the best, and so it's a separate section on smoking. It's number six on...
You're close, no, no, you were close to it.
Okay.
You were...
You shared one.
Yeah. Right. Yeah, sure, and it defines smoking and to include smoking of cannabis. Now, this, the definition of smoking that I took is the definition that's in the New York State Public Health Law, I thought that was the best one to use, and then the one thing I would change is vaping, the definition of vaping. There was one I saw in the, I think it was in the cannabis law, but it doesn't, it's not that helpful, I think a better definition would be the use of an electronic smoking device that creates an aerosol vapor, so that's the only thing I would change on that. And then, so the definitions are fine, I guess the main thing, too many things for the board to discuss, and I just, I just made up where it should be banned, you know, and you guys see what I have there, right now, I have proposed that, well, certainly many public, I say on the premises of any public building, so, because I know Connie and I can start about, you know, the stairs, I mean, if you just said village hall, well, if you're on the stairs, anyway, so on the premises of any public building, playground or park in the village, right now smoking is banned in the parks, but I don't think it's banned in the playgrounds, it's only, only because of the park rules, which are, and then, you know...
I think all the, I think all the playgrounds are in parks, which is why...
In our parks, okay.
Probably why.
Well, on any street or sidewalk, I had Main Street, West Main, North Esther, South Esther, and the west side of Broadway between Station Road and Madison Parks, so, because there's some businesses there. I don't know whether you want to not include some of those things, or include some other streets, and then the last thing was the fine, I just threw in a hundred dollars, I don't know whether you want it, how you're fine in that or fine, anyway. find the map or fine, anyway, so those, I think, are the two main things to discuss, um, unless you're uncomfortable with the whole thing, but if you're comfortable with it generally, which I got the sense, is where you want it banned and what should the fine be.
Yeah, ironically, I think I find, um, traditional tobacco cigarette smoke a lot more noxious and annoying than cannabis smoke, but it's, uh, it's, to me, if, I don't want you to smoke a cigarette, a regular cigarette, I probably don't want you to smoke anything, I guess, but, uh, it's hard to allow just cannabis, um, so, uh, yeah, I think to me that is just kind of nailing down exactly where we want it, and, you know, I think, I think you probably hit the, the main ones, um, Connie, I think.
Yeah, I, I thought, um, the name of the street when you go across, um, the other side of the tracks and you come down, is that called River Road?
It's.
Isn't that the name of that street? No?
You know what, it's been called a few different things, so I'm not really sure.
It's West Main Street, isn't it? No, West Main Street, there was east and west, I mean.
It comes around.
Yeah.
Your mask, it keeps going down. I'm sorry, I'm really freaked.
It's called, it's, right, it's also been called Bridge Street, so.
Yeah, or whatever that street is called.
Which, Connie, which street are you talking about?
You go over on a bridge that, that takes you across to the other side of the tracks.
Oh, okay.
And then you start down going south, that is my.
Do you mind there on there as well?
That, I would think that's the same kind of, um, situation as the ones you've made. Now, as it continues down all the way to scenic Hudson Park, doesn't that, is that become a private room for Bridge Street or is that a, a village road?
It's private property, but we have a right of ingress and egress over it to access the park.
I, I think, I mean, I would think, me speaking personally, I think that whole strip should be included, um, I mean, a lot of people are walking to scenic Hudson Park there, um, included, is it a street, does it have this?
It's private property, that's a place you can enforce.
I'd have to look into a little more book, there's something to be counted for, and that location, I don't know if that would fall under that.
Yes, we'd have to look into whether it's even, something can be enforced on that property or not.
But the top part, that doesn't apply, the.
No, that's, that's public.
That's, that's an actual village street.
Yes.
Okay.
What's, what's the name of that street?
We don't know.
We'll, we'll come up with the right name for it.
Yeah.
It's Bridge, I, I call it Bridge Street, but that's, you know.
The, uh, the book club address is River Road, but I don't, somebody.
Or is it all the same?
I know what you're talking about, we'll figure it out.
Okay. Okay. I'm assuming you, you, you weren't interested in the, the little, the, I didn't want to say the whole downtown district because I'm assuming, you know, I do that, catnip and buck out, whatever.
People have spoken for their houses.
Yeah. I, I think, you know, I thought this was, you know, thoughtful and I just thought of all the streets like that and that was the one that came to my mind that wasn't included.
This type of, um, this type of ban is not the easiest to enforce, I think it's going to create a lot of, um, a lot of conflict, I mean, I don't know how you feel about it specifically, but it just seems like there's a lot of conflict over this. I understand, I understand the reason you're even considering this is because of the cannabis legislation, but you're, you're including obviously regular cigarette smoking and vaping in, in that as well, and, um, you know, that, I don't know that the, I don't know that that's going to be expected by the public, you know.
To me, the parks are the most important for me, um, sidewalks, I'm kind of ambivalent on because.
The parks, yeah, but the parks are already covered.
Right, because I, you know, to me, changing it to include cannabis, I also, I'm not sure if we really needed to or not, but, you know, to me, it was, it made it very clear, um, but I'm not sold that we need to have it on all public streets myself, um, I'm curious to hear what we hear from the public. Um, I know people said they don't want the other kids making around cannabis smoke, things like that, and I don't think most people want to have cigarette smoke, uh, but I don't think it's really a definite issue, it's not a definite issue now, so it's like, are we looking to, you know, crack down on something that isn't really an issue? I don't know, but it does become an issue with, if it's also officer discretion, if it's, you know, someone just doesn't realize that they can't be vaping on Main Street, they say, hey, you can't be vaping, and they say, geez, I'm sorry, I didn't know, versus the same guy sits outside his house every night and smokes out, you know, like it's.
Well, I mean, I mean, you all, you know, this is the first time you're discussing this, and we talked about it broadly at previous meetings, but this is the first time you're discussing the details, so, you know, if, if you're kind of ambivalent about one part of it, I mean, I don't know how the rest feel, but, I mean, decide what goes in the law, there's no reason, if, if the rest of the board is feeling the same way, there's no reason to put it out there to get public comment, you know what I mean?
Yeah, but, yeah, I'm not sure how.
Yeah, so that's why, that's what we're here for.
So is the idea of, of the prohibition on sidewalks that it's in the commercial area where, where?
In front of businesses, where I, I guess the thinking is because that's where, you know, people are coming in and out of, you know, places, yeah. For what it's worth, um, uh, the Village of Gretnaig has a law similar to this that they enacted about ten years ago, I, I don't know, I don't know how it's bonded, I don't know anybody who listens to Gretnaig, but, um, I do have to say, it is certainly not a common law, I mean, I haven't, you know, it wasn't like I couldn't find the model.
You know, and, and there's a, and not that I'm encouraging smoking or, or discouraging banning of smoking, but that, that west side of Broadway between Station Road and Matheson Park South, there's a long stretch that's not commercial.
Yeah, no, no, I didn't know, oh, well.
I wouldn't know where you would put a borderline, but.
Yeah, I mean, it's after the church.
That's my neighborhood, I don't want smoking, but it's a long stretch that doesn't involve commercial traffic, and even parts of North and South Esther, I mean, if the reasoning is it's commercial, I'm not sure if these designations follow that reasoning.
Well, my, my thinking on this, I, I really did think about this ten years ago when it was not, you know, being discussed, obviously, um, but the, what brought it to my attention was the, the right in front of village hall, walking up the steps into village hall, that there was so often a smell of smoke and there was a way to put your cigarette in there and I just thought it was, then I saw that the edge of the building here by the court has a little no smoking sign over here, so my thought initially was all around village hall, this should certainly not be something that if you're coming into a public building here, that that would be something, you'd have to make your way through that, now it's not as bad as it used to be, I don't think there were as many smokers, but, um, you know, I also think that the, um, the, the cigarette went so long on the sidewalk and, and, you know, that, I, I felt like we, we didn't have a strong enough statement about this public health issue, smoking itself, so, um, so maybe it's not as many streets, I mean, I, I would be interested if Frank talked to, uh, Gre- Gretnaig, you said, might be interested to see, you know, is it absolutely enforceable, unenforceable, is it a, is it a waste of time or is it, um, something that, um, you know, parents in that community don't want to model, um, seeing people smoking on the sidewalk, um, or maybe that's not the rule of government, but I, I certainly would like to pursue it further, I would want to drop the idea.
No, I'd be fine, definitely, with, you know, no power of security, obviously, and, you know, public buildings, you know, uh, and around public buildings, within, you know, twenty feet or whatever the standard is, um, you know, that's, that, I think that's almost a no brainer. Uh, going further than that, you know, I, I probably want to give this more thought here, my colleagues.
Can I, um, one quick question, so, the reason we're even talking about this is because of the new cannabis legislation, right? So.
That's why I came.
The, right, that's the reason we're even talking about this, is, is the new cannabis legislation, so is there an ability to restrict the smoking of cannabis at specific locations?
And not the other smoking?
And, and, and leave the rest?
I wouldn't want to defend that law on court.
To me, I, I think.
I'm not saying you can't do it, but I would, and it, and actually probably smoke, secondhand tobacco smoke is probably more dangerous, I'm not a cannabis fan, I don't , but I know that secondhand tobacco smoke is probably more dangerous.
But even like you said, like in front of schools, but I think it's probably, I can't smoke without school running, I think it's, uh, to me, it's like, uh, I don't know, but to me, like, let me say, Main Street, in front of the Main Street School. I think there's a, there's a role, but to me, it's like, you know, on Main Street, part of Main Street School, and then up here, you know, like by the, the gym, that, those all seem like great ideas to me, but, you know, going up the sidewalk with the, with the vape gunners on the outside, it just doesn't seem, you know, cannabis to me doesn't make this worse than tobacco, I think tobacco is, is worse to me in a lot of ways, so, um, you know, there's other things to talk about cannabis, but, um, the actual smoke itself, I think, I think tobacco is worse, but.
So therefore. You know, and again, we, we like being vanguard, um, a vanguard community, um, in something like the stretch code and, um, be in front, uh, to me, this is another way to be in front and provide a good model for a community that people would like to move to, um, so I, I wouldn't abandon it, but, you know, obviously, but, you know, if you want to hear from the public, I'd like to hear from Frank about, you know, if you have bike, um, biking walking tours, isn't that making it a little more easy to, um, enforce something like that? It might save somebody's life.
I, I, I agree with Larry about it, it's probably makes more sense to find out how the, the board feels about it, the rest of the members of the board before you put it on for a public hearing, unless you just, maybe the other board members aren't sure even, they just want to know what the public has to say, which is also a failure.
Yeah, I think it's, you know, this is coming up because of legalization of cannabis, I think we don't treat the two substances differently, what we're trying to do is avoid Main Street because there are restaurants, people are going to come out of the restaurant to have a smoke outside and there are apartments all around Main Street, we want to protect people from that, we don't want it in the parks and we don't want it, um, in the entries right into the parks, but I think we limit the forbidden zones as much as possible because that enables us to enforce it better, if we make it too broad, it's just people go ignore it and it's going to be too big an area where, where it's not allowed.
Mary Ann, instead of, instead of banning it on, on, on streets and sidewalks, can we, can we use a terminology in front of commercial buildings or in front of restaurants or, or something like that as opposed to?
Yeah, you could.
You know, taking it off the street.
You could do that, actually, actually, there, there may be, how Gretnaig here, there, um, let me, I don't know if I can.
Of course.
If they did, they'd force the level.
Well, I think it creates, it creates a natural pathwork on the.
You're saying just in front of the commercial businesses or just in front of what?
Public buildings, schools.
No, 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 it's already, it can't be at school, public buildings, parks, hard, but Larry's talking about just in front of businesses, I guess. Yeah, it could be granted however you want to, I mean, I think that would be a fair distinction, but.
Well, again, I'd be interested in Frank's survey, it wouldn't even have to be just Gretnaig, it could be somewhere else even in Connecticut or Massachusetts, in terms of how hard it is to enforce, um.
There's one, yeah, there's one question, Connie, but, but the, the truth is, I know I say this all the time, it's so Pollyannaish, but if, most people follow the law.
Yeah.
You know, most people follow it, they didn't, you see, you shouldn't get all bad hung up on enforcement if you think it's the right law, you know, um, can't, can't raise conflicts and stuff and then people be coming and saying, I had the police give them tickets for, you know, um, smoking on the street, but, uh.
Well, I only, I only raise the issue of conflicts because it's, it is a bit out of the norm for what people are used to.
Yeah.
It's a pretty wide area that you're looking to ban and, you know, that's not normal, I think there are normal aspects of, you know, public buildings and schools and beyond that, it's not normal, so it's going to create, it's going to be, you know, aside from putting up signs everywhere, which I don't think anyone wants to do, it's going to be unexpected by most people.
And it's, and also, it's almost like we're anticipating a problem because of cannabis that, you know, I, no one's ever complained to me in my twelve years here, uh, about, you know, someone smoking in front of my restaurant or, you know, I don't see a big uptick with cannabis, really, you know, so, um, you know, it, it almost feels like we're solving a, a problem.
I, I only wrote this because we have to, this is our best part, I'm sorry.
No, no, we did, we definitely did say we should look at it.
Oh, okay.
But I also think, we also don't have a, a, a strong enough law around the public building either, so, it's, that, and I think we also want to add cannabis specifically to the smoking law so that it makes it easier in the parks.
No, and we, we wanted to expand the definition to include vaping, which obviously wasn't on the books previously, so, um, you just have to figure out the area, if it's a wide area, it, it sounds like you're a little bit split, you have some that want a wider area, some want a less wide area, so.
Well, I think we should, we should keep it on the agenda and we should encourage public comment, I think.
Well, it's not proposed, it's, it's only, this is just a draft right now, it's not even up for.
Yeah, but you may, you may want to, even i- if you're putting it on the agenda, you may want to narrow it now or do, or do what Larry Longley suggested about just in front of business, I can change it however you want to before, before you go public.
So what do we think? You want to limit it to commercial buildings for now and have a discussion like now? I think we can actually, if you have a public hearing that allows us in public input, you could, right?
I mean, it's not, it's not technically a public hearing, but you can ask for feedback from any, anyone anytime.
Right, sure.
Sure.
So we take commercial implementation, keep it as it is for now?
I'd rather keep it as it is except the street that, um, Larry, which, which part were you talking about, Larry, when you were mentioning?
Between Station Road or?
Well, you could just take off, you could just, you could just take off the whole of Broadway.
Well, there's certainly the, there's one commercial strip between Main Street and.
Well, between Station Road and Main Street, take out the Matheson Park, the only other thing is the gas station.
Which, which is there?
Hopefully, yes. So it'd be set between.
But the bus stop, they could.
Station Road and Main Street, it works.
We could change it for that for now, we can get some public input.
Okay. And just leave the fine at a hundred?
That's fine.
Okay.
Next up, we have announcements, uh, public hearings, there are local, um, in chapter one fifty-three of the Village, uh, Irvington Code, Parks and Land, respective park rules and regulations, that's for Monday, August thirty, twenty twenty-one, at seven PM in Village Hall.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll make a, but you want, do we want to, I don't agree, I think they kind of speak for themselves pretty much, um, do we want to go over this at all, like for the?
Well, I was going to ask, we, we had gotten a letter from, from the Shen's regarding bike riding in the woods.
Yeah, we'll, we'll.
That was going to be adjusted on, I would say, that's just.
Oh, yeah.
No, no, this is, this is.
This is down a long time.
Yeah, this is, we'll make adjustments based on that if they, like it does, so.
Yeah.
You know what, you know what this does, this just says smoking and vaping are prohibited.
Yeah, that they have to be integrated, no, what do you think?
You're talking about it to be integrated, it's not defined, so maybe we have to add a definition of smoking and vaping to this law.
Okay. I just meant one would refer to the other, but if it's easier to introduce a definition.
Yeah, but it would be kind of, yeah, I, 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 I think this should, there should probably be a definition in here of it.
All right.
Um, I'm not sure where it fits in, um, but, let's see, Larry, when, when would you be, um, putting the, the law out for the, um?
As soon as the, as soon as, it sounds like the draft's being updated, so as soon as the draft is updated. Uh, we have a long time, we have.
Yeah, you've got a while, so the other month, okay.
Yeah.
So, so let me, let me just, I don't know, whether I do it by, maybe I'll, in the nuisance section, there aren't really definitions, so let me look at the whole thing.
Yeah.
But I think, I think it should be defined there.
Right, and we'll look at the, and we'll look at the one comment that we received about bikes and Irvington was.
You let me know there.
Yes.
Okay, yeah, I'm aware of it, but I'll wait to hear from you one.
Right.
Okay.
All right, so I'll make a motion for public hearing, consider it, local, um, any chapter one fifty-three of the Irvington, Village Irvington Code, Parks and Land, respective park rules and regulations for Monday, August thirty, twenty twenty-one, at seven PM in Village Hall, if I can have a second.
Second.
All favor?
Aye. I did notice one thing in there reading through this, it says swimming not permitted, I mean, I know, I understand that, but then I brought, you know, what, you know, when you had the, the pagan. the pagan pungent special times when there was a chance to go in the water, is that?
That was a village.
The way it was written, you couldn't even, it looks like you couldn't set up a special event like that.
So that.
So it wouldn't apply?
Correct.
All right.
It's just like alcohol with October mist.
Okay, all right.
Perfect.
Next up, we have checks over $25,000. First one was for Tommy Pucci excavating as part of the, as a park renovation for $32,750. We also had Pacific Trans Global Destruction Corp. as part of the police headquarters glass replacement, that was $16,271. We also had Edamore Chevrolet Incorporated, which is for the fire chief vehicle replacement from the capital fund, that was $44,514.50. And lastly, we had O'Connor Davies LLP, the title billing for our audit, which was $37,000. Next, we had correspondence, as I mentioned at our last meeting, now that we're back in person. Much to my board's every letter, they're all, they all have been published, so everyone can read them. But I will kind of quickly summarize what I believe they're about. We actually had one, two, three, four, five letters. Doug Rovers, Danielle Claros, Anita Marshals, Sarah Cox, and Lisa Gen, that were talking about the potential to put the street signs, the street name signs on the, on the ground. And basically, being opposed to that idea. I think most of them were pretty much opposed to the idea in general. Some of them said if you're going to do it, you have to at least say that they were enslavers. So that's, that's, those, but. We also had Jeff Kerr's letter, which had two points. One was that Doc already brought up about allowing bikes, so we'll pitch it out for the public hearings before the public hearing, we'll try to adjust the law. Basically allowing bikes in, in the, they've been there basically before anyone else was using the ones. So we get a graph under it and then he also wanted to ensure that when we talk about the special permit for Villawaro, that we look at the conservation easements and we stay good and we can make sure we do that. So thanks, Jeff. And then the last one was an offer for dedication of Dearman Close and Sterns Ridge to the Village of Irvington. It's basically in the residence, which I see two here tonight, at least, asking if the Village of Irvington would take over the roads now that they're pretty much complete with construction up there. We also want a lot of support documentation because the lawyers are involved. My question for Larry, and I don't think you know the answer off the top of your head, was the history on this. I think it's mostly from 2002, it looks like, was most of the documents were from. If there was an original agreement that the village would take over the roads when construction was complete, you know, the board, because every couple of years we get questions to take over private roads. The ones we have are the ones that, for whatever reason, never happened, even though it was agreed to before construction was started and all the others we've actually said no to, and you know, it just makes it hard because you allow one in that didn't have the agreement before construction that you have to let everybody in, so. I think we need to do a little bit of research.
Well, yeah, I was actually going to turn the question around, so I don't, I don't know firsthand that there was some scenario where the planning board sat there in good faith or the village board at the time sat there and said, yes, when it's built, we'll take it over and then changed their mind somewhere along the way. It may have happened, I don't know. But I think that's the question you're basically asking, and so to the extent that the homeowners association and the homeowners that are here have any information about any of the history on that, that's, that's what we're asking for. So.
Some of you guys know off the top of your head, if, if, if that would happen.
Hi ma'am, I apologize, I'm doubtful, so I'm not carrying a higher speed to your heart areas today. But we'll find out.
Yeah.
Whatever questions you have, we'll go back and look at the approving resolutions from the planning board. Whatever you need in that regard, we'll definitely supply to the board before August 30th.
Okay, yeah, so that's, that's basically our key question.
Okay.
If the, if the board of trustees and/or the planning board said, hey, when you guys are done, let us know, we'll take them over.
Okay.
You know, it's usually at a certain level, which I think you guys already understand.
Yep.
Then, you know, I think that it's pretty easy. If, if that's not the case, then it's pretty much possible. So if, if basically, if basically we just have it as a, as a policy, entertain taking over private roads because if we do, there's just a lot of them, there's a lot more Irvington that we're kind of aware of, so it's not like, you know, just yours. So hopefully for you guys, that was negotiated upfront and if you have those documents, please send them over and we'll push it right through. Now we're. Please. So we're not getting that.
Actually, I.
No, there's no public hearing, it's like.
Can I just sit right here?
Yeah, actually, you know what?
You just sit right here?
Or you can do that, either way.
This is just the three minute.
It is, it's totally three minutes.
Thing, it's high conversation back and forth.
No, I, I cut my conversation down, so. Thank you for the opportunity to speak about the sidewalk plaques and my research on Justice Dearman, who we all know is the first name of our settlement. I'm also wanting all of you for reading a great deal of research recently on Justice Dearman. It was generated by myself and my colleague Sarah Cox. And also Eric Wyson, who I appreciate you all because there were attached significant attachments, summaries, responses sent back and forth. So given your deadline for reviewing materials, I was really unsure if my final comments had been seen. And of course, I, I sent that letter and what I'm just going to assume is that, let you read it or if you've already read it, fine. And I'm just going to just, I'm really here just to ensure that you clearly understand my research, which was done in collaboration with Sarah Cox, and I promise to be brief. So I've, I've done an extensive amount of research on Justice Dearman's life beyond what Cox and I reported in our June 20 Zoom lecture at the Irving Public Library. In fact, I'd love to do another article for the Historical Society on his life. It's very interesting. I've reviewed decades of census records, tax documents, wills, maps, marriage and burial records. And Cox reviewed all these new materials with me and we came to the same conclusion that I stated via email on August 1st to all of you. So I'm just going to summarize that, that, those four to five sentences. The documentation we have provided supports the fact that Justice Dearman's New York City household included one unidentified enslaved person in 1810 and that the practice of servitude bond or bondage, defined by social historian Deanne Krueger, is called virtual slavery, most likely continued over the following two decades in the area now known as Irvington, 1820 and 1830, as a pre, quote unquote, free colored boy served his term of indentured service. So in short, Justice Dearman, Dearman enslaved two people over the span of 30 years. And then I'll just conclude with this. That I just wanted to again reinforce the same thing, it's based on, I've spent four or five years now studying the history of slavery in New York State and the great New York City that people marry all of the Hudson Valley. And the term enslaver is the proper term for people who hold others in slavery and servitude bondage. And those people who were held in slavery and servitude and bondage, the proper term is enslaved. It is the prevalent term found in current literature on slavery and it's used by major media. And our town needs to remain current with terminology unless we find those browned words outdated as soon as they are set firmly into our sidewalks. And I always said with pride, Irvington always gets it right, so let's just do that. Thank you.
Anybody else?
I announce myself and my address right now.
Yes.
Just your name.
Lori, 3 Sterns Ridge, here on behalf of Dearman Homeowners Association. I just would like to go on record, my husband Jim is here, as well as fellow homeowners Ben Glazer and Dan Antonelli. Can you hear me okay? So thank you for taking the time to all be here tonight. I wanted to say that we have 15 homes at Dearman. There are 16 lots, the last one is still for sale. And everyone why they couldn't be here tonight is in favor of the dedication. Collectively, our tax roll is almost a million dollars and we have garbage and mail delivery to our homes. So I'm not really sure what the designation of private road versus a public road is since we get those services. When Dearman was subdivided, none of us were there. It happened maybe before 2000, I think.
Before 2005, yeah.
Yeah, so we weren't there. We'll look to see if we can find a document that you're referencing, but I don't think the four of us would know that offhand. We do know that another condition that was part of the subdivision is a road from Field Point to, like, right where the student parking lot is. And that's a road that's on paper and apparently on record with Albany, but that has never been accomplished either. We are paving our roads with funds that were collected from all the homeowners as an assessment because our roads were never completed. Those are being paved August 16th. For the, in the time you meet again August 30th, our roads will be complete, brand new and we'd be happy to take anyone for a walk through to confirm the condition. And we are just hoping that you'll consider our plaques, especially knowing that the entire association is in favor of them. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other?
Actually, I'm going to stand because I like to stand.
Stand if you want.
But that's okay. Hi, Lisa Gen, I live at 61 Halloway Road. Thanks so much for taking my comment. The first thing I want to say is just to thank you all so much for opening up Madison Park. I was there both afternoons this weekend. It is gorgeous, it's glorious. It had children playing and laughing. It was the village green that I think we all had hoped for and just could not be more grateful to you for that righteous decision. I really appreciate it. Also was really heartened to hear about, from Chief Signatelli and his colleague, about all the efforts that are happening Eball training and all the other forms of training that I think are bringing our police force to where we need to be in terms of, you know, racial and other kinds of justice that we're trying to pursue. So that brings me to the, the main thing I want to talk about, which is the plaques, because I think we're moving in the right direction in so many areas that it would be a shame to take a step that I think would be moving us backward. And I don't want to restate what I already put in my letter, but I do want to make a couple of additional points. You know, we're, as a society, as a village, we're reexamining the way that we have told history and how we have centered it on the experiences primarily of the powerful, which has been throughout history, wealthy white men. Because I've sat through this meeting, I've had a chance to look around at the portraits that are here and how little we kind of question when we see in public space wealthy white men and, you know, fancy costume, fancy dress, certainly upon us, because that's who we understand have been the powerful storytellers in our society. So I think we shouldn't be casting these folks in bronze without giving serious thought to whether those should be the honors in our society. And then the second point I want to make is to support my colleague Kathy Sears, who talked about the importance of language. That if we go from, we're extremely careful in the language that we use. And I think sometimes we don't realize how painful words can be unless we're actually living in a completely affected population and language is evolving so quickly, it can be hard to keep up. But for example, if somebody doesn't have a gender clear or gender fluid or trans person in their family, they may not realize how painful their own pronouns are using, somebody's dead name is. Or if somebody doesn't have an autistic member of the family, they may not realize that now the puzzle piece is considered a really painful symbol for a lot of people in the autistic community. So I understand and sympathize with myself, somebody who's learning with how difficult it is to keep up. But that's just another reason to be extremely careful that we use the most current language and actually to think twice about whether this is the right historical moment as we're evolving so much in the society and these issues to cast something somewhat questionable in our city streets. So thank you so much for taking the time to listen.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Hi, my name is Melissa, I'm an Anne and I live at 286 Turner Road. I'm sorry, I can't hear you. Okay, hi, my name is Melissa, I'm an Anne. I live at 286 Turner Road. I'm 12, I'm going to grade at the Irvington High School and I just, sorry. I just want to say that about the plaques, that I've lived in Irvington for almost all of my life and I'm part of this town's future and it seems like it's a possibility that these plaques also might be. These plaques are celebrating men and humans and they're going to be cast into the sidewalks. So, and the history told on these plaques is inaccurate, it doesn't portray the full picture, put these men where. And the time for inaccurate times in history is, is now over. Putting these plaques, I think, would be a step backwards in the progress, in the great progress that the village, the village has been making over the past few years. And I think it would be a shame to put these plaques in and have it be a step backwards because the village has been shooting a lot in the gutter. So that's all I want to say. I'm going to give up.
Thank you. Anybody else? The last will move on if you consent agenda. Everybody have any questions for the consent agenda? Sorry. Alma?
My name is Kelly Scott, 49 Main Street, Irvington, Unit 3. Thank, as many people have already stated about the plaques and that's why I'm here. The plaques is not about today, whether, about the frame that we set for the future. The language that we choose to use is going on, and I know my colleagues have alluded to it, but as, as a black person, when we use phrases like slave, whether than enslaved, then now it implies that the slave, that the, the person was a slave at their core versus being enslaved. And then the adjective of the slave reveals that going bondage, bondage was not at the core of this person's existence. And so further more, that that person was enslaved by the actions of someone else. Therefore, we use terms like enslaver, and so I think when we, when we're looking at the verbiage and we're looking at the language, if we continue to go in the direction of plaques, which I'm against, but if, if that's the direction we're going, we need to make sure that we frame it correctly. And as I've stated so many times, we're, we're in a moment in history and a time that what we do today, and it's always the case, that's going to shape tomorrow and the future for your, your kids, my day, my kids. And, and it matters. And so when we make decisions, it's not just about us, it's about them as well. So thank you.
Yeah. Anybody else? Consent agenda questions? Consent agenda questions? So it's a good time to let everyone else have a speaking. Everyone, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda. If I can have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye, aye. So now we have some reservations and appointments. First is write a date, resignation and appointment to the Recreation Parks Advisory Committee. Resolved with accept with regret, the resignation of Norrie Deggan from the Irvington Woods Committee. Is that, that's hard fact, I guess, right?
I'm sorry, you should be.
Yeah.
Hard fact.
Resolved with accept with regret, the resignation of Norrie Deggan from the, from the Recreation and Parks Advisory Committee, effective June 2021, and for the resulting point, Jane Ann Corelli is a member of the Recreation and Parks Advisory Committee with a term that expires December 2023. with term expiring December 2023. I would like to thank Noreen. I think she was on there for a really long, yeah, a really long time. It had a big impact and, you know, congratulations to her for all that, those years of service and dedicated service. Ed, welcome Gina Ankerelli. So I'll make a motion if I can have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Brian, effective due social technology, I think she came on when I came on. Not quite as long as Rick, but it's a long time.
Hope it is.
And she was always speaking up for what was right and what, what the rec department should be thinking about as primary, which was all for services for families and for children at rates that family and children could afford to do.
Great.
And welcome to Gina Ankerelli.
Yeah, we'll go out today. I think you guys created a chime on the Playground Committee. That's part of the new Madison Park. So she, this is just a next step for her. So it makes sense.
I wonder.
Yeah, she was recommended by, it's Joe and RPA in general. She had worked so closely with them during the renovations. So next up is a resignation prom and appointments to the Architectural Review Board. Resolved to accept with regret the resignation of Kent Lewis from the Architectural Review Board effective August 2021. And further resolved to appoint Mitchell Cox as a member of the Architectural Review Board with term expiring December 2023. Jonathan Facili is the second alternate of the Architectural Review Board with term expiring December 2021. Again, Ken, I'd like to thank him for his service. He's an architect. Mitchell Cox is also an architect. Jonathan Facili is a, I think he's a designer. He does some kind of like, he's a design work, he's a contractor. And so he does every plant, plants. He's not an architect, but he seems excited to serve. Mark and I booked a talk to him last Thursday, I believe. He seems to be raring to go. So good luck to that. And I'll make a motion if I can have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'd also like to thank Kent Lewis. Kent has an experience, extensive experience in the city, in architectural projects that were for us. They're, they're quite amazing. And he's spent quite a few years here, I think, that could attest to that. And, and we did very happily find an architect who had moved to Irvington recently. And I spoke to him and he spoke.
I spoke to the mayor of Hastings, who could not have been more enthusiastic with their support and praise. So of him and his, and his wife, his wife's also an architect, not practicing architect. So we might be tapping her in the future. But he's also an EMS volunteer. They do a lot of things. So it looks like you got two good ones. We stole from these things. So which is good stuff. I think one other thing that, one recommendation, please forward to me Mitchell Cox's contact information. And also get it to the Building Department.
Yes.
One of the things, Rick, since you're here, you know, one of the things we were talking about when we were, each other scrambling about getting an architect was do we want to look at that requirement? And, you know, is there a way to do something maybe with professional or something to backstop that? So we don't have that same issue yet.
I've got to tell you, I think it's very important that we have an architect on board. I think it's, it's there. I think that, that requirement is there for a reason. There are, there are issues that no matter how hard we try, we're not going to see something when we look at it like an architect. Someone who's been trained, you know, to look for certain things that just don't, don't look right. And I will tell you, while that person ended, you know, hours toward a meeting or at least, you know, minutes toward a meeting, it was the right thing to do. It was the right avenue to go down to, to.
Right. From the perspective of the planning board, it's often there are really important architectural matters.
Well, I wouldn't say get rid of an architect altogether. I would say could we, you know, have almost a consultant to the Architectural Review Board or something?
I think you do it that way too.
That's, that's what I was thinking.
And you're paying for it.
I agree. That consultant would have to be. But, you know, so I think that was kind of Larry and I were like, how do we, what are some, what's a way to avoid not having an Architectural Review Board and can't find an architect? Because we had to move here from Hastings three months ago. You know, and is that, is that something we can do? Either, you know, have, have a member of the board that is an architect or, you know, pay for a consultant. You know, and that's, you know, it's because I think we just find so many architects that are willing to serve also have fines in the village, which obviously the rent code doesn't allow. So it's, it's something we should probably, we ought to talk about tonight. But just something to start thinking about. And I'm not exactly sure how it would work. So I'm not, I'm not familiar enough with the way everything works. That, you know, could, could that be something that you all get comments from the architect? I'm not sure how it would work out with script, the whole board. We could, but think about it. Just, just plan to see. Because right now we're good.
I'm just glad.
It is a way, it's the back of, but if one moves, they probably will move them. So it's not the best back of plan.
Yeah, right.
Next is approval of contract with an engineer for the Town Hall Theater HVAC project. Larry, I know we talked about, you know, oh, I don't know if I told, did I tell everyone on the board about the funding? I don't think so.
Andrea and Tom.
Andrea's out, yeah. So Tom, Tom told us he was in for $125,000. But she still said he's in for $125,000. But the exciting one was, her three cousins' office called me last week and said, "Congratulations, we got you half a million dollars."
Woo!
I decided she was so excited that if you give her time, she could, she could find you more. But, you know, we kind of said, "That's phenomenal. It's probably, you know, $150,000 more than my best case scenario." So, but she even said, "Actually, I called her after and she was so excited to help us," which I thought was great. But I think it just underscores how important a project it is and how important that theater is to, you know, the area. But it obviously is a huge help to us that we have, you know, $625,000 of it paid for as of today. Well, I guess not yet, but we have, we have the grant applications and it's, I think it's pretty much as long as we fill the amount properly, we spend the money.
Yeah, well, one's been signed already.
Yeah. So, but it was exciting. And I, I kind of wanted to say it for her personally, but it did sound great for the theater because she was very excited too. But so it's going forward and I said, Larry, full steam ahead. So here we are. We've gotten to the next phase of it. I think Larry, you still said you had a few things you needed to hammer on on this.
There's a few little things, yeah.
We need until the end of the month to get it started. Because obviously the theater is going to starve until this is done. It's going to take six, seven months to get this project complete. So.
Once they start construction.
Yeah. Yeah, that's, that's exactly, that's after all the work.
Greg, would it be possible for us to write a, like a letter from all of us to both Andrea and Tom expressing our excitement?
Absolutely.
Tom, who?
Tom.
Tom.
And, you know, we, it was funny, Greg, Alan and I were talking about like, what's the appropriate way to thank someone that gives you a government grant? But I think a letter would probably, you know. So, yeah, definitely we can, we can draft something to both of them. So Larry, we'll put that in the call ups.
Yep, got it.
And we can do that next weekend too.
Happy Asper Day, Greg.
No. So anything else to say, Larry, other than?
No.
Okay. Resolved to approve the contract with PLR Group for Services Regarding the Irvington Town Hall Theater HVAC Renovation Project. And authorize the village administrator to execute said agreement upon review and approval of the village attorney.
There's a few little minor things, yeah.
I'll make the motion if I can have a second?
Second.
All in favor? All right. Don't lose steam now, guys. Almost there.
Right, guys.
Thank you, everybody. Thanks, everybody. Number 14, we're going to take off the agenda for tonight. We're really moving. Then 15 is a, I think I'm just going to read these except if anyone has any questions. Otherwise, Chris is going to have to show up like Irvington education. Whereas three bid, for general construction of the village's Irvington projects. Whereas three bids received for contract 2021-06 for general construction of the village's Irvington projects as follows. So you can park contractors in their shell for total spending cost of $1,892.44. Pacific Transglobal Construction Corp. painting at Hudson for $2,282. A&amp;J Construction of New York Inc. West Nyack for $2,542.20. Whereas the village administrator being proposed to submit is determined that proposal for legal park contractors is not responsive to specification. And whereas the village administrator determined the second closed proposal from Pacific Transglobal Construction Corporation is in order and responsive to specifications, therefore be resolved that the proposal for legal park contractors hereby rejected. And further resolved award the contract 2021-06 for the general construction of the village's Irvington projects to Pacific Transglobal Construction Corporation at the unit price submitted in their bid. And authorize the village administrator to execute said contract. I'll make a motion if I can have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
You can, you can stick with just the resolves on the next few. I mean, they're all attached to these agendas.
I'll do the double resolve. Resolved that the proposal of Pacific Transglobal Construction Corporation is hereby rejected. And further resolved award 2021-07 for painting and finishing the village's Irvington project to Tossa Painting Corporation at the unit price submitted in their bid. And authorize the village administrator to execute said contract. I'll make a motion if I can have a second?
Yes, sir.
All in favor?
Aye.
Just trying to share.
Resolved to work contract 2021-08 for flooring to A&amp;J Construction of New York Inc., New York Inc. at the unit price submitted in their bid. And authorize the village administrator to execute said contract. I'll make a motion if I can have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Resolved to work contract 2021-09 for ceramic tile to A&amp;J Construction of New York Inc. At the unit price submitted in their bid. And authorize the village administrator to execute said contract. I'll make the motion if I can have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Guys, you're good.
Resolved to work contract 2021-11 for electrical works to Morbidio Electric at the unit price submitted in their bid. And authorize the village administrator to execute said contract. I'll make the motion if I can have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Reports of board, send to me, send to office. Don't forget, it is on reports. Joe Argino, why don't we start with you tonight, Doctor, if you're ready?
I'll find it, you know, in a second.
All right. I don't have any reports.
Perfect.
Honey, I was going to let you talk about Shakespeare at the O'Hara Vintage Center.
How did I didn't see?
Well, starting this weekend at the.
From yours Friday night?
Twelfth night, yes.
I thought I missed the whole thing.
So I'll just mention that. Okay, a couple of things. Summer Day Camp ends on Friday. Special thanks to all parents, campus and staff who helped fight through and make it an enjoyable experience that was filled with many challenges. The senior center is open Tuesday through Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. Food shopping every Wednesday, exercise every day. Park is open to the public. Reservation for tables and grills can be made online. Visit IrvingtonNY.gov/parks. Park users are reminded that launching, landing or flying a drone over any village park is illegal. Please report drones to the IPD. Teenscape ended last Friday and held four exciting and adventureful weeks for the teens of Irvington. We're still looking for a few part-time staff to fill positions in the department. Please contact Joe Argino. The high school, O'Hara Summer Basketball League sponsored by the O'Hara Foundation and IS CAP ended last Thursday night despite constant weather challenges. It was another successful summer league. Fourteen high school teams participated. And finally, plans are underway for a full fall program offering, including hopes that the Hayride, Peter Old Turkey Trot and the Halloween Parade can be done. Thanks.
Excellent. Yeah, and I'll just throw in 12th night, I think.
So there's, I think there's, I think there's a total of nine performances?
Nine performances or 12? Anyway, there's only 50 seats. So, but you can still get on the waiting list. There were people that had like tickets to four nights or something. So they're actually following it up to see if they're really going. But they're trying to free up as many seats as possible. So. Connie has nothing? Tess?
Yeah, I have. From the schools, new grandstands and press box are completed. Campus learning pavilion is progressing rapidly. Enclosure of the campus is underway. Dow's outdoor restroom is delivered and is being installed. Work to install new curbs and the repaving of Dow's parking lot is underway. New Dow's library roof is currently being controlled. Dow's gym AC, new gym floor is being installed. Safety solar film is installed in Dow's classrooms. And IMS and DL new entry vestibules will be completed this month. So they've been making very good use of the summer vacation. For the library, two adult programs this week. Summer Reading Series is not fiction World of Wonders on Wednesday, 8:00 or 7:00. And China, the Forbidden City and the Great Wall, Saturday, 8:27. And here's a report from, from the fire chief. You're going to love this. Would like to thank the board for approval of capital budget. And special thanks to Brenda for her guidance and helping to secure the new chief's vehicle for the routine effort. That may be a first. Thanks. And the fire department will be training on roof ventilation and forcible entry this month.
She's training tonight, so my department is, that's fun outside. Village Administrator's report.
So I don't have a report, but I would like to talk to the board for five minutes if you can give me an executive session. So when you're done with the meeting, adjourn to executive session regarding real estate.
Mr. Treasurer, I assume you have nothing from her tonight?
No.
Village Attorney's report. Public comment. Public chief, thank you. Review action items?
So the, we'll be passing along the information to the building department about the new ARB appointees and working to craft a letter to our state delegation.
Perfect. So I will make a motion to adjourn to executive session regarding real estate. If I can have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Thank you, Greg.
Good to have you here.